Let's go ahead and start the meeting. I would like to welcome you all to the November thirteenth. City Council Work Session Agenda or Session here at four o'clock. What the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exceptions of council members or Council Chair White and Council Member Myers, they will both be here shortly. And Councilmember Traburka has asked to be excused today. So we will go ahead and start our work session with the General Plan Water Use and Preservation element. We've got Delaney Silman, Logan Simpson, come on up. Welcome.
Yeah, yeah, they'll pull it up. Yeah, so we appreciate you taking the time to review the water use and preservation element. This is a required element that the state is required. And it really is about coordinating land use with with water use. So we appreciate Delaney being here and presenting. And we hope we can answer any questions that you might have.
There we go. Perfect. And thank you all for your time. As Brandon mentioned, this is the Water Use Preservation Element that's required by the state. It's part of Plan Ogden, but the state also requires that it be adopted by the end of this year. So that's why it's coming to you before the rest of the general plan. I know it's a little wonky, but obviously we want to make sure that we're addressing what the state is required. So taking a step back, why are we planning for water? I think this is not something that feels particularly strange to us in this room. Obviously, we understand that we've experienced some extreme drought lately. We also know that the growth of the state is just explosive and that generally Utah has had very limited water for all of its life, really, in the past, you know, written history. And so this is something that we really care about. The state really cares about it. And obviously, as Brandon mentioned, they are now compelling us to do something about it as cities and counties as well. So that state law that we've been talking about, this is kind of a Cliff Notes version of the what's required piece of it. So the things that are highlighted here, you'll note water demand and water infrastructure. What is our development pattern? So that's the future land use map and our future land use plan. That's how that connects. What is that future land use map going to do for our water demand? And then, of course, what our service providers will have to do to the infrastructure and finding additional water if necessary. The next piece here, what is the some methods for reducing our demand for existing development? So that's what's on the ground in Ogden today. That next one, number three, is aimed at what is our plan for future development? So of course, we understand the city is going to continue to grow. And we don't want to necessarily stop that by any means, but we want to make sure that as we continue to grow that we're implementing some best practices in terms of water conservation. And then finally, that last piece, this idea of evaluating modifications in local government operations to reduce and eliminate wasteful water practices. So those are kind of the the guidance around what we should be including in the plan to address the future. There's a couple other pieces of the elements that are also required. You'll see the water budget essentially is that kind of or that weighing of what are our water supplies today and in the future? And, you know, kind of what are the plans for expanding the water supply? And then, of course, what is our land use today? And then what is our future land use? So identifying if there's a gap between those things. And then, of course, if there is figuring out how that's going to be addressed either in land use planning or with our service providers. One major piece of that, before I go too much further, is really this idea of collaboration between the people who are providing services, the people who are using water, and then municipalities that are administering some sort of land use regulation. All right, so this kind of overview of the chapters really is kind of more specific than that kind of higher level view that I was just talking about. Obviously, we need to address those objectives that we saw on the list on the previous slide. And we need to identify what is being done now and in the future. The Water Conservation Plan, which you'll actually hear a little bit about that, I think, on our next agenda item. But the Water Conservation Plan is a really big part of this, too. The service provider, the city, is already doing a lot to address water conservation. The city's job and the objective of this element is really to say, is our future land use in alignment with those actions rather than kind of trying to tell the service provider what to do or that sort of thing? It's really about this idea of making sure that those things align as much as possible. And then there's a couple of little items for, you know, that get a little bit more specific. We're addressing options for park strips, specifying new low water use landscape standards. That's as part of a as a separate project. The Zone Ogden Project is already tackling that concept as well, which I believe I've talked to several of you about also. So that landscaping component of the ordinance is going to be really important in the provision of kind of these goals and policies in the water element. All right, and the way we've chosen to organize this element is by splitting it up into some key concepts. So initially, we're addressing this idea of water in Utah. That first slide, we have drought, Utah has limited water in general, kind of some background about that. Water in Ogden specifically, who's providing the water? We have secondary and culinary water that's important. So we'll discuss that a little bit in the chapter as well. And then we get into best practices for water conservation, what the Ogden water is already doing. And then the goals and objectives is the what's next part. That's the goal for reducing water use and also aligning our future land use with good conservation best practices. So that that second little bullet that you saw is the water in Ogden component. So we address the sources of water for the city. We also address where the secondary water is available throughout the city. That's, you know, an important and interesting, just little tidbit. Usually that secondary water is a lot cheaper for folks if they're using it for landscaping. That can be a huge consideration for things like how accessible different landscaping requirements are for people. You know, cheaper water for certain types of landscaping elements can make a really big impact and something the city should be considering as we're making and addressing our regulations. And then obviously, you can kind of see that all laid out in that table as well, where our sources are from. Again, these are things that align very closely with the Water Conservation Plan and just the the Culinary Master Plan that is also a really important document and aligns closely with the water element. This is a kind of compilation of the last several years. We can see Ogden's water use and then its population. So a really great trend that you can see is that green line there is our annual water use. And then the the bold blue lines are our population. So in the last year that we have in this table, we actually see that our population has kind of grown significantly faster than that annual water use, which is good. That's meaning that our per capita water use is going down, essentially.
I don't know, it's just I've always I've looked at those numbers and I'm curious with the amount of apartments being built, how accurate those are. Do we know? No, we've asked, do we have occupancy rates on those? I've heard both things. I've heard that they're coming on coming online fairly quickly and others that maybe they're not filling up as quickly. And then we know there are a lot more apartments coming online based on what's been approved and everything. But I'm just curious where we get those numbers and how accurate they are.
Yeah, absolutely. That's an excellent question. And I think we can have a broader conversation about our population projections and everything. The numbers that you see in this chart actually did come from the Division of Water Rights, I believe. Barton, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
So that's actual users then?
Exactly. Yep, that's their the provider's estimate of the actual users, but it does come from the census, I believe. And correct me again if I'm wrong, I think we have somebody in the audience who might be able to address that better.
Yeah, and does come from Division of Water Resources, but it's information that we give to them. So it's it's our water. It's our water data, what we've produced, what we're putting out. And one of the big reasons why you see that thing low is that our conservation has been successful.
And this is the population as reported, obviously, for today. We'll get into kind of what we're showing in the future and how we showed that, too, because that's an important consideration. Alrighty, and then Ogden has kind of a unique situation. We also do have wholesale contracts with folks outside of the city. Those are areas that we don't necessarily have any sort of land use regulation regulatory control over. So we have kind of set those areas aside and we're really focusing on what's going on within the city. So that's why you'll see two little lines there. There's one that says gallons per capita per day and true gallons per capita per day. And gallons per capita per day is just a kind of a measure of the, obviously, per capita water use. There's, you know, it's one of those really important numbers that we see. And that's actually one of the pieces that is mandated by the state is that we have some specific goals for what that gallons per capita per day number looks like within our region. And so that's why it's important to kind of call it out. Ogden, you can see here, our true gallons per capita per day is at 184. So that's excluding those folks that are within our our wholesale areas. And then you can see this pie chart here that's pretty interesting as well. This is kind of the breakdown of where that water is being used essentially. So primarily residential, nearly 50% of the waters or the city's water is being used for residential uses. About a quarter there is being used for commercial. And then that remaining quarter is split between industrial and institutional uses.
Can I ask a question about the percentages? I I appreciate the percentage, but I but what I'd really like to know is how much of our water is being used for landscaping versus uses that are going to go down the drain and end up in the Great Salt Lake anyway?
Yeah.
Do we have that data and are we considering that?
It's 60%. 60% of residential water use goes on our lawns.
The issue is, though, is in conservation, where are we conserving? Are we conserving on the water that goes on the lawn? Are we conserving in our houses or or at our business or wherever it might be? I think those things I, you know, from what I understand, you know, Barton and I are both on the sewer board and we're learning that the our water rights can continue even till they hit the back end of the sewer plant. Just kind of interesting. So and that water, I mean, even though it's been used, it's still water and it's still in the in the process. So, you know, I'm thinking in those terms and this isn't really portraying that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. A couple of thoughts about that indoor versus outdoor water use. Obviously, that breakdown is really important. And we do actually, in the element, you'll note that we have goals for indoor water conservation. And then we also have goals for outdoor goals for indoor water conservation and then we also have goals for outdoor water conservation. Those are different kind of policy levers, right, that we can pull. We can use our landscape ordinance to address what's going on our lawns. And then we can, you know, really try to connect residents to rebate programs for addressing appliances and things like that that are addressing the indoor water use component. So so those are some things that are in the element. Although I think hearing you and thinking about this kind of chart specifically, breaking these things out in indoor versus outdoor water use, kind of at that level of our residential is that 60%. It's really quite a high. Commercial, much less so for outdoor versus indoor water use, that sort of thing. And that's clarification that would be helpful. Perfect. Yeah.
Is there any use of water for agriculture at all? We're not much of an agricultural community here anymore, but there is a lot west of where we're at. Does Ogden City provide water out that way?
That for the wholesaler? I don't know that for sure. And and we do have some folks that may be able to answer that question.
Thanks, Brady. Yeah, agricultural use, no, we would be making these four areas that she's addressing is the areas that we would supply. Can't really speak to some of the ones that we would wholesale to for like Bonavista out to the north of us. But my understanding and talking with them is that it's all mainly residential type settings that they're selling that water to.
So the Pineview water is not used at all. That's that's a different source for our secondary water. That's not included in Ogden City in any way, shape or form. That's part of Weber Basin.
So we we do contract water through Weber Basin as well as we contract water through Ogden River Water Users. And that's what we utilize to run through our treatment facility in order to use that water. But the vast majority within the reservoir itself that are like agricultural users would be going through those two agencies for for their water through that reservoir, if that makes sense.
Our ordinance will affect Pineview water users. We're going to require people to use water, so it doesn't matter who's we can't have an end to it. We don't govern the utility or the provider, but it will happen. What we do have effect.
And I just to kind of add to that too. So with the state coming out and mandating that all agricultural side of things has to be metered by 2030. There's a huge push in the next, well, in the last couple of years as well as in the next couple of years to to try and get meters on everything that's agricultural as well as secondary irrigated.
Brady, while you're here, who's paying for the meters? How do they get paid for it?
They've got some funding at the state level that they can go and like apply for a grant through the state. A lot of agencies, like I know Ogden River Water Users has applied for a lot of that and have been very successful in getting the vast majority of it. They're doing different releases of those funds over several years and phases. But yeah, that's generally it's coming from the state in in the event that they're not able to cover the full cost. They're having to pick it up as a company.
So that that was my question is, is the user having a fee charged for them for some of this metering?
Not.
Because of having to put the meter on it.
Not as of yet. Yeah, not as of that that I've seen or discussed with those agencies. But I would have, I would imagine over time that's going to change just because they're going to probably start allotting a certain amount of water to individuals. And if they overrun those allotments, then they're going to have to either pay fees or penalties or anything that way if they overrun their allotments.
And maybe it's not directly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eventually, I think you'll start to see in order. And they'll probably have some added costs to maintain that infrastructure long term and building it too. So.
Thank you.
No, no, that was perfect. That was great background information. All right. All right, well, moving along. So again, diving right back into the general plan and how this is fitting into the general plan. So from our general plan process thus far, we established some household and employment projections. These are based on our land use. So our future land use map was developed. We apply some assumptions for the number of folks that we think are going to be living in these certain types of land uses. And then we also similarly with jobs and kind of the different land uses that are there. The jobs you'll see is a pretty aggressive increase in jobs. Households is also, you know, relatively on par with what we've seen historically. And then another set of assumptions that were made is that those different types of land uses are going to have certain water demand kind of numbers associated with them. So you can see here, we've broken that out again into that same dynamic that we saw in the pie chart, residential, commercial, industrial and institutional. But we basically applied a set of assumptions to our single lot, kind of traditional 8,000 square foot lot is going to have one equivalent residential unit or connection associated with it. That's all getting very technical, but essentially taking a step back, we applied assumptions to our future land use map and using our future kind of population projection. We came up with this gallons per capita per day, approximately 190 gallons per capita per day. You'll see a slight increase in this if you were noticing the table that we were looking at two slides ago now. This is because of those jobs. So as we increase the amount of water that's being used in the city overall, because a lot of that is going for different types of employment, that's not necessarily going to be reflected in our gallons per capita, if that makes sense. So I want to explain that distinction really quickly because I do think it is important. And even though it it may look a little wonky, that we're going up, actually, we are still within that regional goal as well that's been set by the state. And we all know that caveat, which is that employment obviously requires water as well. So here you can again see that breakdown. So here are kind of those connections that we envision. And then that 21.7 million gallons per day by 2050 is kind of the supply that we think will be required if the city grows as we have highlighted or outlined in the general plan. That next and last bullet point is really important. Ogden sources as identified in the water conservation plan and in the master plan of of that dynamic there, the 21.7 million gallons per day. This is going to be approximately half of Ogden's supply. So that is pretty significant. We have enough water essentially is kind of what that's saying. We'll be hitting kind of 50% of the city's supply by that 2050 date. And this is assuming some conservation measures as well, which we'll talk about too. The specific strategies are kind of outlined in our goals and everything. But again, that water budget that I talked about at the beginning of the meeting, this is an important component of the state's requirement. And so we're here establishing that the city has the resources for the future land use map that we've established essentially. And then here's the action part as well. So we identify lots of strategies. An important component of this plan element is to offer some educational background for whoever the reader might be. And so we identify the conservation strategies that are really best practices. The strategies that really stick out, limiting water loss, leak detection, metering we just talked about. Those are things that would have a pretty big impact on the city. And we kind of talk about the historic progression of limiting water waste in the city over time. And there's still opportunity to continue to improve there. The response to drought, obviously, reducing residential and commercial uses, especially in landscaping where we have, you know, we understand in Utah that folks want to have very luscious landscapes regardless of what the spring forecast looks like. So ensuring that our landscape ordinances provide flexibility for those folks who would really like to incorporate water wise landscape elements, that there is nothing in our code that is stopping folks from doing that. Now, we're also linking people to good quality resources that help them establish good landscaping and all new development. We also outline education, highlighting resources that are available in the state and in Weber County, the landscaping requirements, things like smart metering and secondary use and metering of secondary water. That is just an, again, that's one of those pieces of education, just acknowledging that there are programs that you can apply for to get rebates for smart meters, that sort of thing, encouraging them if if folks feel it's within their means.
You know, I've I've talked about this with the sustainability folks and, you know, there's, you know, I I put one of those those on my water line all three, three or four years ago. And it just helps me to to me to go, tell me what what appliances are used, how much water, you know, how much do you use it? Would you think about that kind of thing? I was just looking at mine when you were talking about the per day. And so far today, we've used 49 gallons at my house and to the month, we've used 526 gallons. That's just two of us that live there, but I think we're underneath the per capita goal, so.
Yeah.
And and I think that the information is is helpful for people. So so I guess what I'm kind of hoping that we can do as a city is to encourage, even if even if we do it with an incentive. Because I've tried to get, you know, I tried to get a rebate from Weber Basin, who is the keeper of all rebates around here lately. And they said, no, those don't qualify for a rebate. At least they didn't then. Do we know if that's those those kind of things are available for people to rebate yet? And they know.
Are you talking like the smart controllers more so for sprinklers or?
No, not not just the controllers. This is this is a blow by mow and it goes right on your inside water use thing.
I haven't seen anything come through Weber Basin or any of the conservancy districts as of yet that I've observed. But it's mainly been conserve outside for the irrigation components because that seems to be the biggest waster that's outside. And I think that's where they've targeted their funds and doing those rebates. But it's definitely something that could be discussed in the future for sure.
Yeah, what they are rebating for right now is water wise landscaping on your front inside yards.
And water conserving toilets, things of that nature.
Yeah, they do have a toilet rebate. It has to meet certain age limits. But yeah, that's still is offered through Utah Watersavers that and the smart controllers for the agations.
Great.
Yep.
Sorry to detract again.
No, that's another great note. And I think one thing that is important too is is noting where those resources are located because they do change, especially those rebates. They they change over time. And and so does the water wise landscaping guidance. So that's something we want to make sure that it's very clear in the in the plan. You know, the USU guidance or the Weber Basin guidance that those things may change. So we're not necessarily re reestablishing those guidelines in the plan itself, but rather kind of trying to link folks to where those resources live and are continuously being updated. Okay, and we I don't believe go too deep into the policies here, but I want to give you a glimpse of the element goals. So as I mentioned earlier, we have goals specifically related to reducing outdoor and indoor water use associated policies that look different for both of those. Encourage educational conservation efforts. So again, that's linking people to resources and to, you know, the best practices that are available on the market at the time. And improve operational efficiencies for providers and large users. So that could look like, you know, more coordination between the service providers. Again, you know, one of the things that was part of the general plan effort was identifying very clearly in a very singular location where we anticipate that growth is going to happen, whether that's residential or employment growth. And that hopefully is providing the the information that's really needed for the service providers to be able to identify their projects in the future too. That vision that led that future land use map is is really just in one place, which I think is really huge for the city to be able to keep going back to that. Great. And that is all that I had. And then sorry, Brandon or Barton, if you have any thoughts about this slide.
So what I'm just curious, what happens if we don't get the general plan done in time that we need the water element incorporated?
Hopefully adopted before December 31st of 2025.
When did the state, when did the state require this on the cities? Was it this?
In 2022, actually.
2022, okay. We've been working on that that time.
No, we haven't been working on that one.
But not to be implemented until the 2020.
2025.
That's correct.
Like, yeah, that was the.
Yeah. And it was triggered because of the statewide drought. The legislature decided that land use and water providers needed to coordinate better. I think it's a good, it's a good move.
So last night, and there were some in the room that also attended this stewardship Utah meeting over at the Union Station last night. And it was a started with a panel and included our mayor and Representative Cofer and the the grand poobah at Weber Basin Water. And then an individual from the state who's involved in water resources. And then it was followed by a PhD doc from BYU who talked about the lake and what's going on. And water conservation in in that setting was not an option for the state of Utah. It is absolutely positively a must. It was really startling in a lot of ways and anybody else who was there last night can chime in too. It it was mind boggling. The guy at Weber Basin Water said, if he drained all of his reservoirs to fill the Great to run it to the Great Salt Lake, it wouldn't be enough. And we'd be out of water. And then what would we do? And I thought, well, water comes from bottles at Costco. What do we need reservoirs for, right? So and and then the guy from BYU, there's a model out there that has the lake collapse within five years. The state has set the goal to get the lake to recover to a healthy level by 2034 to match the Olympics. But it's going to be a it's a tough ask to get there. And he had examples of saline lakes around the world that have collapsed. None, many have been endangered for a long time. None have been saved. And the consequences of a saline lake like this collapsing are dire. They highlighted one in Iraq and one in Uzbekistan. And the fallout to human health and agricultural viability was mind boggling. Cancer rates and COPD and asthma and, you know, the the human condition is greatly degraded by the dust that comes off of these lake beds. And the city in Uzbekistan was 100 miles from the lake. And they were able to record tremendous increases in in illness and disease. And the agricultural community, they had pictures of dust plumes blowing across the lake, hundreds of miles to the north covering agricultural ground. And to begin with, the farmers had to wash their soil. So they had to irrigate it to rinse the saline deep enough into the soil that they could grow something. And then it collapsed and cities have been abandoned because of the loss of saline lakes. So it was startling for me to be in that room last night and listen to some of this stuff. It's it's really not a question of should we? It's a question of we must. And the guy from BYU was, he really rallied the pioneer spirit and can. he really rallied the pioneer spirit and canduism around, uh, Utah, being able to get this done. But it was a, a very powerful night last night. I was kind of blown away. And, um, this is timely. So I'm, I'm glad that this is before us tonight. Yay.
All right. Any other questions? Sorry, I was late. All right. When is this on the, when will this paper book? Long after I'm gone?
No, it's a little bit.
Okay. All right. Brady, I think you're up next.
Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you. So, um, what we have before you for review and approval or going to be going into the general session is the water conservation plan. Um, the water conservation plan was enacted by the state around mid nineties, around nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety eight. Um, so with that, this is an update to our earlier version of it five years ago. So we've gone through and updated the plan every five years. Um, to, to date, it would be required by the state to be approved by December thirty first of this year. So that's why we've had, have it before you now. Um, with that, um, as you can see in some of the slides that were shared with, um, gallons per capita. Um, we are tracking around that one eighty, mid one eighty mark when it comes to gallons per capita. Um, currently for the state's requirements by twenty sixty five, um, the regional goal is a hundred and seventy five gallons per capita for, by twenty sixty five. So that's ultimately what we have outlined in the conservation plan is to shoot to hit that mark for, um, twenty sixty. Which leaves us an, a remaining five years, um, for us to be able to hit the one seventy five if we don't, if we, if we fall short by twenty sixteen.
Brady, how does, how does that affect, how does outdoor water usage affect that per capita thing? Is that, is that, is it part of the deal or?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We want to be targeting out, outdoor water is the most wasteful. Um, and that's why we've gone through in the last several years and partnering with Weber Basin in an effort to try and do the turf conversion programs through the park strips. Um, I know that that's been something that we've also, there's been mixed opinions and, and some controversy in a sense on, on the private side, on the backside of sidewalks and front yards and side yards. Um, that's something that we'll continue to have discussions on because it's, it is one of the biggest culprits for waste. Um, but ultimately that's, yeah, outdoor, outdoor watering, much like what Councilman, um, Graff was saying. Sixty percent of waste is targeted outside use. And so that's, yes, for sure. We need to be doing a better job in that regard.
Well, that brings up the question then, uh, if we're, uh, trying to collect this data to see how we're doing, what do we do with the thirty seven percent that are using the secondary? We, we're not reading those meters. We're not calculating that usage.
Correct.
How, how are we gonna work that into the mix?
So in the next several years, hopefully by twenty thirty, like the state is mandated at that point in time. Hopefully we'll have a better understanding as to how much is being utilized through those secondary irrigation, um, meters. Um, right now I would say it's a little bit premature because we don't have the full picture. They do have some meters in the ground, but with time. Um, yeah, we'll have better, better idea hopefully by twenty thirty. But this plan is intended to be looked at on an annual basis and be iterative as we step into the future. So that we're constantly adjusting and seeing where, where those waste, wasteful behaviors are occurring, whether it's secondary or culinary based. So that we can engage those individuals. So there's those agencies is what I would say. And so, um, we, there again, we partner with Weber Basin. We work with Pine View and Ogden River Water Users very closely. Um, I, I know that initially when the state passed those laws, that there was a lot of controversy and maybe some pushback because they didn't necessarily feel that some of the waste is there. But I think it'll be become very evident as we step into the future as those meters go in. So hopefully that answers your question.
They're currently installing, uh, meters all throughout the east bench, you know.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's just their Pine View meters. They're the ones that are gonna read them, won't we? That was kind of the question.
Yep. So, and that's, that's where we'll have to, stepping into the future from year to year, we'll have to be checking with them to understand and getting more of a complete picture as to where, where we can do a better job in conserving that water, both secondary and culinary based.
Does Ogden City have a secondary water system?
We don't. Nope. So roughly, um, thirty four percent of our resident base is, has access to pressurized irrigation. And then there's about three percent that have access to secondary that's not, non-pressurized. So total, yeah, total of thirty seven percent in total. And then in, outside of that, you're looking at, what is that, sixty three percent or thereabouts that would all be culinary based for irrigation in. So, yeah, hopefully that answers your question. It's still, I would say, a little bit premature to have that full perspective at this point. But it's definitely part of the equation in looking at outside watering for sure. So. Okay. Um, so to just kind of give a quick overview of some of our water, uh, sources that we use. So we already kind of covered, um, Pine View earlier. Um, we do pull a good portion of our, our water, um, through the summer and spring and, and, and fall area or times of the year, um, through the reservoir. It's a supplement for irrigation and through our culinary system. Um, the remaining portion of the year through the winter time is mainly through our Weber Basin feeds, um, on the south end of the city. Um, that's our contracted water through Weber Basin, which is treated water for drinking. As well as we have the well fields up on the north end of Pine View. So that, those run year round. Um, and then we have two wells in the valley, one up at the top of twenty seventh street. We, which we refer to as Taylor Canyon, and then one out by the airport, um, just across from the terminal that we utilize. So those are kind of our sources that we pull from year round. Um, mostly our groundwater and well sources are, are the ones that we utilize the most, I would say. So with that, um, let's see. They did a good job in already kind of recapping some of the internal conservation measures. Um, I just wanted to recap a couple of those. Um, so capital improvement projects are probably one of our number one. Um, I think to kind of emphasize in looking back over the past nine to 10 years, if you look at what we report to the state. Um, every January, February time, we have to report to the state how much water we're producing as well as metering and connections throughout the system, um, and reporting that in, in conjunction with population so that we can get to these per capita numbers that were just discussed. With that, um, over the last nine to 10 years, we've seen roughly a seventeen percent in reduction from our losses. Um, from what we've historically seen, that's substantial. Right now, we still are experiencing about a fourteen percent loss from production to actual delivery. Um, but given ten years ago, that's pretty substantial that we would have saved that much water. So we'll continue to focus on capital improvements, um, because we feel that that's also a major water saving for us. Um, is through maintaining good, solid infrastructure that can keep the water in the pipes and delivered to the areas that it, it's intended to be delivered.
And other than thirty six inch pipe that's coming down, is there one bad pipe or are they just several everywhere?
Yeah. So Ogden City is very aged and very antiquated. And I would say that, um, we, we try to be as forward thinking and as proactive as we can in replacing, uh, infrastructure as best we can through the master plan, through the water. Um, master plan that we regularly are updating also, but I would say we're behind the curve on that in, in replacing infrastructure. There's a lot of distribution lines, um, a lot of older six inch lines that are just aged and, and leaking and we just are doing our best.
I thought if there was one or two that we could.
Yeah, the transmission lines for sure. I feel like the, the canyon lines for sure saved or, or will save a lot of water. I know when we replaced the twenty four inch line in the canyon, I think it was around three million gallons a day that it is saved. And so with the thirty six inch line getting replaced, it could have substantial savings as well. So, yep. Um, we also continue to pursue leak detection along with what you were just saying, Councilman White or Councilman, yeah. Um, just in going through our distribution system and trying to be proactive in, in addressing leaks before they become so large that we're wasting a bunch of water. Um, as well as we try to have, um, SCADA, which allows us to be better controlled, um, of our whole system, um, in keeping irregular um, behaviors happening or flows and demands, um, from occurring, meaning like if we observe irregular flows or demands coming out of tanks or different areas of the system. And SCADA allows us to, to be able to see on the backend how much is potentially getting wasted in some areas so that we can go out and start be more attentive in certain areas of the system. So, um, also with that, we also, we regularly doing water audits internally, which allows us to kind of go through and give ourselves a grade. Um, the last time that we had done it, uh, we got about a fifty nine out of a hundred. And our goal, um, by twenty forty would be to shoot for around seventy out of a hundred is what we're trying to shoot for. Um, really a lot of it stems from some of that aged infrastructure, I would say, and just some of the leaks that occur. Um, as well as we have, um, remote meter, um, reading, um, we have, it kind of fluctuates, um, throughout the system. But we have anywhere from about mid seventies to eighty percent of our system at any given time that we can actually have regular data that's coming in to a software. Um, that we collect down at the utility billing office that allows us to run analytics and, and, and see on the backend whether or not there's any continued consumptions or irregular behaviors so that then we can engage our customers and let them know of irregularities that are occurring and, and so that they can be saving money as well as conserving water that way. Um, I know that there's, there'll probably be coupled with that in the future. I know that resident access, um, or utility um, billing is going to be having some, some software that'll probably be more engaging with our customer base to help better monitor some of that. Um, also, I know there's been a lot of, um, interest from the state of recent of having tiered, tiered water rates. Um, currently we already have tiered water rates in effect, um, which encourages people to use less water because as they use more water, they obviously they're going to have to pay more as they go. So that will help. And then we also are regularly going out and maintaining and replacing our pressure reducer valves. Um, may not be aware of this, but as we go out and control those, those valves and reduce some of the pressures in certain areas, it helps reduce some of the consumption that can be pushed through the system. As well as it helps reduce potential leaks that could happen if and when pressures are too high. It'll help reduce some of the, the larger leaks that we may incur. Um, and then you probably are already aware of some of the ordinance that we already have in place of no watering between ten AM and six PM. Um, that's something that we go out and enforce on a regular basis between April fifteenth and November first, um, for outdoor water use. That's something that we'll continue to practice and enforce that way. Um, external conservation um, programs that we offer, uh, public education. We participate in, um, public outreach through Weber County and Weber Basin and, um, the earth day out at the, the nature center. So those are all areas that we try to reach out and get involved with the public as well as show them our, our watershed model and everything that way. It's allowed a, a lot of engagement that way. And we also do posts on the website as well as we send out flyers and encouraging conservation. Um, we also do, as part of that, some of the tours of the botanical gardens with Utah State University. And Weaver State, or sorry, Weaver Basin's, um, gardens in an effort to encourage some of the conservation. So, um, you guys are very much aware of the park strip conversion program and we continue to promote that as well. Um, that's mainly contained to the park strips. Obviously we'll continue discussions in the future on the backside of the.
I got an end date.
It does. So that, that contract was signed with Weber Basin and in a partnership for five years. And we signed it, I think it was twenty, July first of twenty twenty two. So July twenty, yeah, July twenty twenty seven is when that's due to expire. So about a year and a half is when that one will become a thing.
What's the, uh, uh, incentive per square foot? What's the cost? What's the?
So Weber Basin contributes, uh, dollar twenty five and this, and the city contributes a dollar twenty five. So residents can qualify up to two dollars and fifty cents per square foot. And so the average, I would say the average square foot that we're seeing in park strips is about fifteen hundred acre feet. Or sorry, fifteen, not acre feet, fifteen hundred square feet. So, yeah, fifteen hundred square feet is generally what we're seeing on most of those. So, okay. Um, and then we also continue to do, um, we've got Matt Hack here that I should have done introductions with him being here. I apologize for that. He's our conservationist for the city. Um, he goes out and will regularly do some water audits with residents. This is indoor and outdoor. Um, this allows him to engage regularly with the residents in seeing different soil types of their, um, their lawn and what that might entail and whether there's different things that they can change up in the regimens of watering as well as whether their sprinklers are more or less out of calibration and spraying where they shouldn't in an effort to optimize that as well as anything internally. Anything you want to add to that, Matt?
Um, just even just letting them know like how many thousand gallons their sprinkler system uses just one time through the sprinklers. It could be anywhere one thousand. Depending how big the yard is, it could be up to five thousand just going through. So when we talk about that outdoor conservation, just one day that's conserved, like where they're not running them, uh, compound effect, that's huge. When you think of how many connections we have on the residential side. So it's on the educational side that, that like a lot of folk don't realize how much that is. Uh, so I'll do high bill checks too, where we'll, I can run a history on their meter and show them where all the water went. Not exactly where it went, but just surmising. And you see when those sprinklers kick on, uh, what's going on. So, yeah, it's very beneficial to see that.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I, can I give a little pitch for Matt? Um, I, anybody in the city can call and ask for an audit, uh, and Matt will come. And he's always got a good smile on his face and he's well prepared. He checks, uh, you know, the soil type and well, I, I guess inside you're checking for all kinds of things. But he, he's just, when everybody that, that I've talked to that have used him, they have good information to act on when they're done. And, uh, he's, he's really good at his job. So I, I would, we need to work him harder, I guess.
I like it. Thank you, Councilman Hunter. Um, along with those, a lot of times too, um, residents can qualify for, um, rebates and kits that we offer, which it isn't much in the kits, but we've got like lower use, um, showerheads and aerators and some leak tablets, which allows people, if they, maybe they don't feel comfortable with Matt coming in, they can also use some of those leak tablets like in their toilets in an effort to see if anything's seeping through. Um, and we can help engage that way if they're interested. Those are readily available. They're free. People want to come in and see those or grab home. We can, yeah, educate them accordingly. Um, and we already kind of touched a little bit on the Utah water saver, savers, um, rebates, um, with the smart controllers for sprinklers. But that's always a, a great thing. Um, those controllers will allow you to, if there's a weather event coming to where it'll basically timeout and not water your, your lawn so that it does it for you. So that you don't have to sit there and be like, is there weather going to be coming or is there going to be a rain event? So those are awesome. You can qualify through those through the utawewater savers.com as well as, um, the toilet rebate. I know that, um, we do have a lot of aged, um, residential households within the city. However, a lot of the, those houses have also been getting renovated, um, and any, anytime toilets and fixtures can be updated. It's just going to help conserve because a lot of the appliances nowadays are water wise. So, yep. Um, and then just the last two we probably have is rain barrels. We do, um, we've participated in the last couple of years of rain barrels, which is rain harvesting. Um, the state allows residents to harvest up to twenty five hundred gallons. Um, in the event that you push over that, you have to get permitting through the state. Um, but that allows us another. Um, but that allows us another opportunity to engage with residents. This last year we, um, I think it was a hundred barrels. Is that right, Matt? Um, and they ended up using, I think all of them is part of that. That usually takes place in the spring, um, and there's a certain allotted amount from year to year. Um, and yeah, it's, it's been going forward the last couple of years and, and worked. So.
Do we know which residents purchased those? Is it usually on the, like a certain demographic?
Um, we do have addresses. I don't, I can't say that we've actually traced them back to a demographic aspect of it, but yeah, we do have spreadsheets of who actually takes them. Yep.
I just always wonder how much it really helps to conserve water.
Yeah.
It seems like the water will be in your lawn. It, it seems like water barrels are there for, we don't put it into the sewer system, not necessarily, or into the water runoff.
Yeah, boy, I, I did buy one of those. I, I didn't get a subsidized one. I paid the cost of one of those. Uh, I kept good records of how much water it collected over the summer. And I got forty-six gallons times six. So it's just under three hundred gallons. Um, I haven't done all the figuring on my smart sprinkler controller, but it was thousands of gallons that that thing saved compared to the three hundred that the water barrel did.
Yep. Yeah, that's, those smart controllers are worth the money, in our opinion.
Yeah.
It, it would be nice to make sure that, that the entire city is able to pay for those. And I don't know if there's a way to do that. Or were those, it'd be nice to have a heat map of where they go.
Meaning the rain barrels or the smart control? Okay. Yeah, that's something that me and Matt can work on, on getting those addresses and heat map them.
Seems like people that can afford them should be able to buy them. If they can't, we should be able to rebate.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
Always having a problem with the rain barrel program.
And I want to say usually the return on cost of what's invested in them is probably about a fifteen years. Isn't that what we determined, Matt? It usually takes a longer period of time to see the return on investment for the rain barrels, but it is something that we continue to offer. So. Yep. Um, and then just the last thing that we would have externally for, um, conservation would probably just be the analytic, uh, software. So, um, we have uh, a software on the backend of our metering system that goes through and interprets all the different irregularities and can, um, run flags and alerts, which allows Matt to come in on a daily basis and engage with that software as well as the residents and, and irregularities to where then we can go stop the irregular behaviors from happening or major leaks or major amounts of money being spent on, on bills that shouldn't necessarily be taking place. So, um, that, that's been really, really valuable for Matt to be able to engage with residents. Um, also this plan includes our water shortage, um, management plan, which is in the event of drought, um, and when we go throughout any given year, um, this time of year, we're praying for snow and hoping that we get good snowpack and rainfall.
Right.
And so depending on what the spring delivers, come into the spring, we yeah, we pay very close attention to that. And then based on whether we need to activate any of that shortage plan, we'll put it, yeah, start putting declarations or any of that into effect. Um, and then just to kind of look at, uh, the next five years, really what we're going to be pushing for, for priorities is continued infrastructure renewal and leak detection, um, like what we had touched on, and then expand smart meter analytics and pressure management. Um, strengthen public outreach and education programs, enforce and update landscape and irrigation ordinances. Um, if, if applicable or where we can, and then foster regional, uh, partnerships and align with, with state and Weber Basin incentives. So um, kind of goes back to some of the, the secondary irrigation when it comes to Pine View and, and Weber Basin being more aligned with them better into the future. So with that, we would recommend, um, moving into the general session to, to adopt this newest version of the conservation and move it forward. So, yeah. Any questions?
Have a question.
Yeah.
I live on Twenty-Eighth Street and when I bought my home fifteen years ago, there was a seasonal creek that ran down through the bottom of my backyard. Rumor has it that they have capped that creek. Although I've talked to people and I can't actually speak to anybody who's confirmed that, but there's no water that runs down through there and not even in the springtime, maybe just small, small amount. So is that part of the conservation plan? Are they capping those creeks that run down through our residential areas?
Not to my knowledge. No, that's, I can look further into that, but I'm not aware of any, anything at the top of Twenty-Eighth Street that would be referred to as like the creek. Yeah, I, but we wouldn't have any idea, anything identified in the conservation plan for that.
The second question I have is Taylor Canyon. You mentioned that early in your presentation. For many years, the railroad owned that water right that came down through Taylor Canyon. Do they still own that? Or is that something that the, the city or Weber Basin owns?
So the well itself was purchased from, from the railroad, rail, man, the city, I can talk. The city purchased that from them and currently owns and operates those rights that are associated to that. If there are other rights up there, um, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to probably go back and see if they continue to have other rights outside of that well, but, um, Justin's shaking his head. So I, I'm not aware of any at this point in time, based on what I've seen on record.
Is the well that, uh, that capped, kind of a spring that comes out of the mountain as you go up Taylor Canyon to take the turnoff towards Mayland Basin?
No, wa- surface water and groundwater would be, yeah, they're totally separate in that respect, be, just because the aquifers, um, if it was under direct influence of groundwater, or I mean of surface water, then the state would not permit us to use that because usually it's a, a lower quality of water that has to go through some type of treatment.
At one time that water was, uh, piped down to a retention pond on Capitol Street, just below Fillmore. It's now been torn down. It's part of the city park there, J C Park. But there was a pipe that used to run down through that. It's really in a bad state of repair now that, and, and but at one time the water ran down there to the, the railroad had. I, and I'm just wondering if that's been diverted over for city secondary use, secondary water use?
Yeah, I, Justin, I don't know if you can speak to that one. I don't.
I don't know if that's really important or not, but I'm very curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, what I believe you're talking about is because yes, I mean, we're going back a long time ago with, when the railroad had that. Yes. So that, that diversion now I believe is piped into our storm drain. Is the city's storm drain water where that was at. Now, the original one you asked about, I do not know what that, that is, we have not capped anything on Twenty-Eighth Street, but coming down out of Taylor Canyon, and I know where they used to have their pond when, where it used to be that, that was not used anymore. And so that water that was diverted there is no longer diverted there.
But it just goes into the storm drain system?
Yes.
Good to know.
Okay. Any others?
All right. Any other questions?
I don't know if this is a question or maybe a comment, but I, I mean, I think it's heartening to see the numbers of the conservation and how that's impacting things. I mean, learning more and more about how, you know, the, you know, the, the multi-housing has helped, you know, the per capita usage is much lower, you know, sixty percent of the water happens in our yards and, and all of that. I, I, I think based on conversations I've had over the last few months, this is definitely still a concern. Um, and, and the development of, of housing is also a concern. Maybe not, I, I mean, certainly in Ogden a little bit, we're, we're built out, you know, we're doing more, um, redevelopment, but you know, there's a lot of planning of communities being envisioned further west. And so at what point does the state say, yeah, you know, based on Councilmember Graft's report of the meeting last night, this is, we keep adding homes. You know, are we going, going to cause a problem with the, the Great Salt Lake? And that, that's a very real concern out there. And so I don't know how we address that, that, or if, if, you know, obviously we do, we can't control what's happening west of Ogden, but there is a lot of development and growth envisioned and planned out there. And so, um, yeah, anyway, those are just kind of some thoughts that I've had with, with regard to this because I think we should try and do our part and we, you know, there's, um, you know, there's a very real need there. And I think these are all great, great parts of that, but is it, or how much of an impact are we going to have with that statewide?
Yep, yep. Those are valid, valid points. Um, I would, a, as part of that, what I would say is this year, we as a city did deliver fifteen hundred acre feet to this Great Salt Lake that could have potentially gone through a treated facility, but being that we although that could be released out to the salt lake, because we, we understand the, the environmental risks that could come from the state being in a, or I mean, the, the, the lake being in a, at a lower level and the impacts and implications that could have on us as a community as well as all our neighboring communities. And so we're actively continuing trying to see how we can work best with the state as well as our surrounding agencies like Weber Basin and making the deliveries where it makes sense to the lake. And so, um, I can't say that that's, that will be forever, but I do know that, um, as we go through and do our master plan, um, we do have water, our, our forefathers and our predecessors, um, that's set up for the city. The, we have a very healthy water portfolio, um, that was set up back in the day. Um, we have a lot of water rights associated with that, and we've obviously made some contributions to the lake as it is, there again, where it makes sense. Um, but we ultimately do have plans in the future as a city as to how we utilize some of those water, but we've got to do it, um, responsibly too. So, yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Brady. All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, fourth quarter capital improvement plan report, Justin Sorenson. Thanks, Matt.
Good afternoon, Chair, uh, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come and, um, share some numbers with you today. Um, if you're okay with it, um, I, I, I put the next two items into one presentation for the fourth quarter and then the first quarter of the CIP. Um, it just kind of flows a little better that way instead of just timing wise and, you know, talking about information that's now passed. So, um, so, so what we'll be discussing a little bit is the, is where, um, the spending for our capital improvements are, um, through the end of fiscal year twenty-five and then also through the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-six. So as a reminder, these are some of the, the, I, I like to always include this information as, as different sources that we seek after to help support um, our capital improvement projects throughout the city. Um, it's not just city, uh, BDO funds or general fund money that we use to, to help support these projects. There's lots of other sources that we, we seek after. Um, we have some different restricted taxes to help support, uh, road and infrastructure projects. And we also have, um, several different grant type, um, funding sources that we seek after from the county, the state and federal levels. And these are all helpful for us to be able to do these projects. And you'll see in the next slide, um, what that impact has been. Um, and the pictures that I included in today's, uh, uh, slide deck, um, a lot of them are, uh, from the Ogden Airport Terminal. As we're getting ready to have that grand opening tomorrow, so I thought it was, uh, a, a good opportunity to share those. So I appreciate the airport and, and providing those to me to be able to include. Um, in looking at the spending for, uh, or this is looking at total appropriations. I, I wanted to share this information. So during fiscal year twenty-five, uh, these are the amounts that by the end of the year that had been appropriated for projects within the respective funds. So in the CIP fund, we had appropriated almost thirty-one million dollars in projects. This doesn't include any carryover. This is just what was appropriated during the year last year. Um, in the water utility, ninety-two million. That seems extremely high, but eighty-seven million of that is the water line. Um, but still quite a bit, uh, two point seven million in sanitary utility, uh, three and a half million in the storm utility. And then over a million in the golf fund and twelve million in the airport, which again, the airport, a lot of that came through, um, federal funds from the FAA. Um, through, uh, for fiscal year twenty-six, what was adopted as part of the original budget included over fourteen million dollars in the CIP fund for various projects. Um, seven million dollars in the water utility, just over three million in sanitary, four million in storm, uh, one point two million in golf and just over a million in the airport. These are all included as, as the, uh, adopted budget this year. In total currently, um, in the, at the end of the, uh, September, we had a hundred and sixteen projects on uh, the quarterly report that are in some stage of planning, design or construction. Uh, we continue to work through with, um, the division directors, the project managers, the executive directors on all those projects and getting status updates. And we continue to, to check to see if there's projects that are complete. And so, um, there's a budget opening later on that I'll be discussing a little bit that will address some of those fundings, uh, funding from a couple of projects that are complete or are older projects. And so we're continuing to evaluate that because a hundred and sixteen projects is a lot of projects. And, um, but it, we have a lot of, a lot of things going on throughout the city right now. Um, for the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty-five, this is the total spending. And again, these were unaudited. Um, so when, when we transmitted this information, uh, by the, by the middle of August, we still were uh, paying expenditures that may have related to last fiscal year. So these numbers may not be what our final numbers are, um, in our financial statements. Um, but as of when the report was prepared, uh, we had over close to eight point nine million, uh, spending in the CIP fund. A lot of that was related to the Marshall White Center and getting that finished. Um, the water utility, about four hundred and fifty thousand. That seems low, but that's because the spending that we started to see was related to the water line and the portion that we're spending first is the ARPA funds, which we aren't tracking in the water utility. We're tracking those in our grant funds account. So that's why it seems like there's something like missing there because we are spending money on that water line. Um, and the sanitary utility, almost one point six million during the quarter. Um, the storm utility, one point four, and then we've had some other expenditures for our, our cemetery sprinkler, CIP, as well as two hundred and sixty thousand at the golf course, which a lot of that was related to the Mount Ogden fence that was, um, completed. So appreciate the appropriation for that. That project turned out really great. And then two point six million in the airport fund, which was mainly the terminal. Um, and then I included here a picture of the new Valley Drive and Twentieth Street, um, change. I think I, today I went out there, um, drove on it for the first time for myself and it turned out really great. So it's really a, a nice improvement to that, that area. A lot easier to navigate. Um, for, and just, I, I wanted to share this. So in, if, if you look at the total for the year, so this is just for the quarter, for fiscal year twenty-five in total, we had over forty-three million dollars in spending on capital projects last fiscal year. So just to give you a kind of an overview of what the year looked like. So I forgot to include those numbers in a slide, but I went and looked at that number. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-six through the first three months, not a lot of spending so far. Um, they've, we have about a million and a half in the CIP fund, um, for a few different projects that are being worked on. Um, obviously the big push was getting Marshall White finished. Um, and then we have small amounts in the utilities that have been spent today on different projects they're working on. Um, and then same with the golf course and the airport. The airport is mainly the, again, the terminals, they're getting, we're getting that finished up. So not a lot of spending to report for the first quarter, um, of, of this year. And I apologize that, that should say fiscal year twenty-six first quarter, not fourth quarter. Um, is there any questions on any, anything CIP related for fiscal year twenty-five or the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-six?
Any questions?
I just had one that was curious. As I was scrolling through the, the, uh, the transmission from the administration, you know, you had a nice long spreadsheet and listed everything. And one of them that popped up was the Mercy car. Uh, where is that? Is it here? I thought we got some news that it would, had been delivered or it was on its way.
I would have to defer. I don't know the status of where, I know that they're working on the enclosure for it, um, whether or not it's been delivered back to us. I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
I don't know if it has or not.
Okay.
So I know they're, they're working on a, on a cover for it.
Yeah, an enclosure. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had was, um, there was a number, eight million dollars that was allocated for future projects and the note said must have council approval. And I'm guessing that was our ARPA money.
That was the eight million dollars that was proposed for the purchase of the jail. Um, there was a half a million for, now I'm drawing a blank on what they were. There was a couple of different sources. We left most of it in there, but we did appropriate the, in July, the amount for the jail out of that.
So it did get pulled out. I was just wondering if that, because we approved that, I wondered if that shouldn't have been, yeah, set aside in its own account and not still reflected in that eight million dollar.
It should have reflected that in the first quarter one, that, that we had pulled that. Yeah, it did. So in the, in the first quarter, there shows a line that we've, we've moved five million to. Yeah, it did. So in the, in the first quarter, there shows a line that we've, we've moved 5 million to its own line to track.
I didn't think to look at that spreadsheet. Thanks, Justin.
Yeah, you bet.
Are there questions? Nope.
Okay. I guess you get me for the next thing as well.
All right. You are up for the next couple of things.
Yes. I'll let Brandon pull that up. There it is. All right. So the next item, um, is our quarterly financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year 26. And again, I apologize, I did not change the fiscal year on this. So many things I'm updating at once. I apologize about that. So this is just to give you all a, a financial, um, where we're at financially for the first quarter. We are currently in the process of, process of drafting our financial statements for fiscal year 25. Um, we've, uh, we finished our field work with, uh, the auditors, our external auditors last week. And so we're in the process right now of finishing those things up and, and drafting the financial statements. It just takes time. But, um, but this, so we don't have, so we'll have that information to present, um, in a, in a couple of months. But as of right now, this is for the first quarter of fiscal year 26. So this is kind of small, but this is a summary of all of our funds and the budgets and the revenues through the first quarter and the expenditures through the first quarter. In looking through this, there wasn't anything that I wanted to take, to draw your eyes to that, that is concerning. As expected, there, the revenues and the general fund are usually outpaced at this point in the year by our expenditures. And it's mainly just due to timing of when we receive our taxes for property taxes and, and sales tax. And so that's why it looks like we're spending higher than where our revenues are. Um, the other funds as our util, our enterprise funds, again, as I look through those, we, we don't have anything that stands out as concerning right now. Um, one thing to note, um, if any of these funds may look higher than normal, one of them being, uh, the redevelopment agency, it shows that we're 95% spent. The reason that shows that way is we haven't, um, posted the budget carryover related to the Wonder Block development project. So once that budget's carried forward, that will adjust that. So that, it looks high because that spending is all related to, um, the, the, the development on the Wonder Block, and that would be the same for the municipal building authority. Um, it's not as bad, but, but that's why those are, those are high right now. So, um, once we finish the audit and we have our carryover numbers finalized, um, we'll get those, um, added in. We'll share those with council staff to be able to report what those carryover numbers are. Diving into the general fund and general fund revenues, uh, so again, we're a quarter of the way through the year. We should be approximately 25%, but you can see taxes, they're always lagged behind. And so, um, I, I have a little more information on the next slide about those. But all the other revenues, licenses and permits are trending at a very similar path as they were, as they have been for the last two years. And same with our intergovernmental revenues, those also, those are our, our BNC road fund, uh, taxes that we receive in our Prop 1. And so again, those are also delayed timing of when we get them. And so that's why that doesn't look very high, but from what we look at trending wise, they're, they're trending at the same pace. So, um, is there any questions on any of the items on the general fund revenues here before I talk more about taxes specifically?
Just a quick question. So when the, uh, the parking was originally proposed or looked at, we had anticipated a slower ramp up in revenues based on, on, on that process. And, and so we had built in lease revenue to, to cover those. But even still, we're far behind the initial projected start date, like in every day it gets longer. So how is that impacting our expected revenues and, and the, the pro, you know, the, compared to the pro formas that we, we looked at years ago?
So I might have to defer that to, to Lisa or Merida to see, to provide a little more context there. But as far as the revenues associated to cover like the debt for that. So this year we used, um, BDO lease revenue to help cover that. And as long as, you know, that timeframe, that would be the source that we would, you know, use to help cover that, that debt until we began that ramp up period and begin to implement the paid parking.
I can ask Lisa if she has updated that pro forma that we reviewed a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think that we could see. Yeah. And then you don't know this, but if the parking structure will be open for the, the, uh, Christmas Village opening, that'd be great.
Does anyone know that answer?
Supposed to. All right. I like that.
Good question. Thank you. Any other ones, um, on this? So, and, and as far as those revenues, they wouldn't, they wouldn't reflect here, um, where we have a separate, uh, fund to track everything related to parking. So we, we have a parking and mobility fund. So once those revenues do begin to come in, we'll track them in that fund. And then that's where we have any operational expenses and then the, the lease payment comes out of that fund and goes to the NBA.
Do we know if the equipment's been ordered or on site or ready to rock and roll or?
I believe it has been ordered. But timing wise, I'm not sure where they're at, but I know it's, I believe it's been ordered.
Justin?
Yeah.
I've asked this question before, but I would just like a refresher on the answer.
Yep.
If in a business setting, those kinds of numbers are kind of scary because the budget numbers are high, expenditures are high and the receipts are low. So tell me how the city compensates for that lag in income from taxes and the, the receivables aren't, uh, aren't received yet. How do you compensate for that?
I'm trying to think of the best way to answer that. We, we have sufficient cash reserve and that to support us. You know, as we let, as, and that's one of the important things of building up a healthy fund balance and having a decent cash, um, balance available to us. And that, that allows so that we've, with having that lag with revenues coming in versus expenditures going out. Um, and historically that's how we trend every year, right? With, especially with our proper, our tax revenues, we're always lagging. So typically for like sales tax, for the first quarter of the year, we've only received two months out of the three that we would receive because of the delay. And then property taxes mainly, a majority of that comes in, in December. And so, um, a lot of it is just making sure we have the cash reserves as we, and, and we, the city's in a very healthy situation right now. And so that's, so there hasn't been any concerns that way.
Well, and you live with this every single year, so it's something you anticipate and prepare for anyway. So.
Correct. Correct.
And I imagine every city lives with this, right?
Yeah. 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 It'd be the same issue with any, any municipality, just the timing of when things are distributed from the state and, and property taxes from the county and. Thank you. So speaking of, of taxes, so yeah, it, it does. It looks like we haven't received very much. And so through the first quarter, we're, we're only about 17% on our sales tax received. But as of November, we've received a couple, uh, another distribution. And so we're actually sitting, so that would, that's really three months. And so I look at that and say, okay, we received three months and we're above the 25% on our sales tax. And so those are some of the things that we are looking at as far as specifically with sales tax. Property tax is a little harder to gauge that way because again, most of that is received in December. So we'll get that large distribution next month, which will then be most of that revenue, um, for, for property taxes. So, but you can see where we're at, um, where we were at the end of September versus where we're, where we're at right now on our sales tax, property tax, franchise taxes as well, some of those lag. That's the hard part. A lot of these, yeah, lag. And so, you know, just planning and how, I mean, it's every year we go through the same, the same process. So. Any questions on this slide?
And that's three months of sales tax, but that's two months of lag of collected sales tax, right? It's really sales tax collected through.
So this would be, so this would be what, what we've received, we received it during August, September, October, but it's related to, yeah, two months lag. Yeah.
So we don't know based on government shutdown and some of the things, the external things that are going on, we don't know what that might be for.
For another couple of months. Yeah. 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 Unfortunately, yeah, that's the hard part. When people ask us those questions, what that impact is, is from a sales tax perspective, we won't, we won't see that for a few months to see if there was a, a hit to it. So. Looking at on the expenditure side for the general fund, um, again, we're a quarter way, quarter of the way through the year. So you'd expect approximately 25%. Non-departmental always runs high because we have debt payments that come out of there, the Marshall White debt payment. And so those are due, we have large payments due at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so that's why that one turns higher than, than that, that percentage. But every other department, you can see where they currently are at. So, um, as of today, I don't have anything to report concerning wise for on the expenditure side of the general fund. Uh, looking at the enterprise funds, uh, very same thing as far as, um, revenues being received by the different utilities versus their expenditures, um, nothing of concern there. And the golf course looks like its revenue is extremely high, which it is. They, they performed very well. But that does also include, um, when we budget a, a, a use of BDO, um, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we, we transfer that full amount at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so it looks like the golf course revenue is high at the beginning of the year because it includes that transfer in for their projects that they're going to be working on this year. But they are performing very well. Um, we actually have a very positive, uh, retained earnings. It's been, that's been built in the golf fund. It's really awesome to see their, their cash balances growing. It's really great to see, um, the, the, what's evolved over the last five years with the golf, golf courses.
Do you break them out, Justin? Do, can you say that both golf courses are performing in the black? Or is it the aggregate of two and one is carrying the other?
We, we track them both individually, and so they both are operating in the black right now.
Wonderful.
Yeah, they're both performing very well. Any other questions on any of the enterprise funds that I can address? Um, one other note, uh, the property management fund, that's, that's the fund that we record the revenues from BDO lease revenue. There's also lag there of when we receive those. We haven't received our first, as of September 30th, we hadn't received our first quarter. We have, we did receive it in October. So that's why there's only, it's only interest, um, earned recorded for the first quarter there. Um, the last slide I have for you is related to our internal service funds, our fleet facilities, our IT group and our risk management. The only thing of, can, the only thing to, to note here is it appears that risk is, is spent most of their funds. And that's usually related to timing of when we have to pay some of our insurance renewals every year. They're always at the beginning of the year. And so we always spend high, it shows high right off the bat with, with the, the risk management fund. So nothing to be of concern there at, that typical every year that it shows that way. Um, with that, any questions on anything financially that I can hopefully answer?
Any other questions? All right.
From my perspective, everything, we're, everything is doing great right now. So. And I think you have me for one more item.
You got a budget amendment, right?
Yep. Yep. This one should hopefully be pretty, pretty straightforward. All right. So again, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to, to hear me on this, on another item, um, more numbers. This proposal before you is to amend the, the city budget, um, in the CIP fund, the airport fund and the golf fund, and they're all related to CIP items. Um, we have some funds in the CIP fund that were, there were two projects, one called, uh, it was called the Trailhead CIP and one that was a Trails General CIP that had been sitting on our books for a very long time. Working with, with, uh, the public services group, they are proposing that we move the last portion of those funds that have been just sitting there to our Centennial Trail CIP to just add to that balance for the, some of the things they're working on in that, with that project. So that would move 193,000 to that project. Uh, the next one is we never, each year we, we, we appropriate, or we propose appropriating funds for, uh, critical project contingency. In fiscal year 25, we, we'd never appropriated a use for those funds. And so this budget opening is proposing to use the fiscal year 25, uh, project contingency and putting that towards the Lorne Far Swimming Pool. Uh, there's some emergency repairs that they're trying to get done before the winter, um, to help extend the life further at this time with the pool. And so the, the amount that we have in that CIP right now is not enough for what they need to do, um, as they've gone up to bid. And so we're, we're proposing to use that 150,000 to move to that CIP and support that.
Can I ask you a question about the pool? Maybe you're not the guy to ask, but you know, you talked about the life, extending the life of the pool. I mean, that pool's been there a long time. Do we have any sense of how long we expect that to last?
Unfortunately, I'm the wrong Justin to ask.
Yeah.
And he's already gone for the night. I do know that, you know, a lot of this, we've, we have put a lot of funds into just keeping the pool running. And so I know that's something that their group is looking at, um, and what, what that is. But this funding is to help just so that we'll be ready for next year, um, so that we'll be able to open. Because the last two years, we haven't been able to open on time. And so they're hopeful that by doing this, I think they're, I think it's a liner that they're putting in this time. That'll help to, to give us a few more years beyond what we've had to continue to do every year where there's been leaks and things that they've had to continually fix.
That's why I asked the question. I mean, it, it, at some point you get a, a point of diminishing returns, right? And are we there or aren't we?
Yeah. Are we band-aiding this thing to the point where it's really kind of throwing money over?
At the administrative level, is it time to just say, okay, we're going to start over again?
Right. And I know that the, the Public Service Department Administration is in this, that is one of the items they've been discussing.
But that would be nice to get on, that on a report that we get sometime when we're talking about that.
It would be.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last item on there, we had an old CIP related to the Ogden River Adventure Park, uh, playground, um, that we had some funds left over that were city funds. And so we're proposing to move those over to the park facilities so that it can be used, um, at other parks throughout the, the city. And so the net change in the CIP fund is, is, is a net zero. It's just moving between projects. So there's no overall change to the CIP fund. In the airport fund, uh, we're proposing to recognize some additional grant funds. So this, this is great work that the, the group out of the airport has done in continuing to work to get additional funding for things. Some of the projects they're working on that we've already appropriated funds for, um, specifically the South Apron and the Cargo Apron. The bids for those came back a lot higher and they've been able to work out and, 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 and have been able to receive additional funds over the next year that will help support, um, those projects. And so this is appropriating, um, those funds to those two projects. And then the same thing with the baggage carousel, uh, to appropriate, um, additional federal funds for that. And then the last three items on there, and I think this is a big win. Um, one of the projects that we, that was appropriated this year was to replace the seating in the terminal, uh, room at the airport. We had budgeted 100 and 116,000, I believe it was for that project. Um, the airport was able to work with the Salt Lake Airport and we were able to purchase some of their, their seating for about $15,000 or no, it was less than that. I can't remember what the dollar amount was, but it was for a substantially amount less than what we had needed to do, what we thought we were going to do. And they were actually still in better shape than what we had. And so they were able to take those, repurpose them. Um, and so by doing that, that's allowed us to now come to you and propose moving the, the remaining 104,850 out of that project and move it to the restroom project at the airport. We had funded that project this year, but there wasn't enough funds when the, um, everything came back for them to be able to do everything in the, the basement restroom there. And so we want to use the funds that won't be needed for the terminal seating, um, to move to that project. And then we also did a, a zero scape project out of the airport. And with, working with, with the airport director, they'd like to, they're going to scale back right now what was initially, um, budgeted for so that they can use, they would like to use, um, 100,000 of the initial, I think it was, uh, 200,000 that was appropriated there and move it also to the restroom. And this will help so that they can get everything done with the restroom, um, that needs to be done at this time. And so that's, so that's just re-appropriating, uh, city. So those, all three of those projects were funded from BDO, BDO funds. Um, and so it's just re-appropriating those between those projects that we'd like to, uh, propose from you. Uh, so the net change in the airport fund is an increase of 2,212,275. And then in the golf fund, what we're proposing, um, yeah.
Now, the, the grant we get from the FAA for, because we've got so many people coming in and out or so many landings, I can't remember what, how.
The entitlement. Yeah.
That's different money than this other money that we got for the baggage carousel, right? Or is that some of the money?
There's other, yeah, there's other different, other programs that the FAA has funding for that they've been able to acquire. So yeah, there's, and I don't know all the acronyms. I apologize. But yeah, there's, so that 280,000 isn't that entitlement money. That's actually. and I don't know all the acronyms, I apologize. But yeah, there's, so that two hundred and eighty thousand isn't that entitlement money. That's actually the one point three that we're going to put towards the Cargo Apron. Great. Yeah, there is. Yeah. So there are different sources of funds that they've been able to acquire.
And I would assume we're on top of all that stuff like stink on a skunk to to get those those grants, right?
Yeah, they've they've been doing a great job. It feel like every day there's something new I'm learning about that they are trying to get funds for out there.
I should have said a duck on a June bug. Sorry.
But yeah, they're they're doing a great job out of the airport and 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 just trying to make sure timing wise that we have what funds they need. The nice thing was with a couple of these projects is when we appropriated them initially, so the South Apron and the Cargo Apron, for example, we thought that we were going to need a ten percent match. And so that's what was funded. And then in working through the process, we only needed a five percent. So in adding these additional funds, there isn't any additional requirement from the city because we've already appropriated enough in match initially from what we initially had had thought we needed. So other other good things. So. I mean, the golf fund, the the last, the last adjustment we're proposing there is the El Monte deck was funded using municipal ramp funds. We 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 took the funds from, I think it was twenty twenty five. And we were going to use a portion of that for the El Monte kitchen improvements and a portion for the deck because they needed a little bit more for the deck. The deck's now complete and there's about twenty one thousand of unused funds there that we want to move over as they've been getting bids back related to the improvements needed to come up to code and everything with the kitchen there at El Monte. We don't, we, they have about sixty thousand and we needed about eighty five or so thousand. And so we're, or eighty six thousand. So we're proposing to move what's left of that municipal ramp funds that we had gotten to the kitchen so that we could use it there. And then the deficit that we needed, the delta that we needed is an additional six thousand. And where the golf course is performing, we're actually, we're proposing to use some of those retained earnings that they've been able to start to build to help assist with that. So the net change in the golf fund is an increase of six thousand, but it includes reappropriating some funds between two projects as well. So the total increase to the city is just over two point two million. Any questions?
Question?
Yeah.
Back to the trails. So this, the scope of the Centennial Trail. I'm just curious if, you know, maybe I need to dig more into that to remind myself what what that whole scope is. I look at the the trailheads and the general and that money was has been sitting there. Last year, I think we worked to move thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund into an effort to, you know, work with the Trails Ogden Trails Network to enhance some improvements and things. And so I didn't know that this money was there. That's kind of cool to find out for sure. But my also kind of been thinking with that is there's been a lot of discussion about maybe redoing some trails around the golf course. And and so would it be better to leave that money in there for that purpose? That's that's just a question I think we ought to ask the administration to consider as that. Again, maybe Centennial Trail covers that. I don't know.
And I I'll have to look and I'll have that some of the information ready when I and we can provide some of that back to 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 council staff with some of that. I can't remember off the top of my head what Centennial Trail's scope is. We'd have to look. Those two, all the the trailheads and the general one, I know those projects. I want to say those were like twenty, they've been sitting on our CIP quarterly report for twenty years.
Yeah.
They're very old and and so I, in working with with Justin's group with Public Services.
That was their recommendation.
Yeah, they want to move it. Yeah. So that and allow them to use those funds.
Yeah, I think that's that that's good to to know about. I just think that it'd be it'd be worth a discussion to see if it's something to be used towards Mount Ogden or the Gibbs Loop. Potential adjustments to, anyway, yeah.
So you close out those CIPs and so they weren't perpetual CIPs. Okay. So you'll just close them out and they'll be done.
Correct. Yeah, the one, the one was listed as perpetual, but it was funded in two thousand and five for a hundred and seventy thousand and this eighty eight thousand is what's been sitting there for a long time. So quite a few years. And then the other one, I was just going to look to tell you what my eyes are. I've made this too small. The other one was funded in two thousand and five as well for a hundred and nine thousand. And as you can see, so we only spent four thousand of those funds. So twenty years of sitting on the books and not being used. So Public Services is recommending that we consolidate it into the Centennial Trail CIP.
So let me see if I've got this right too, Justin. And this is kind of for the public that might be listening in this evening. This is an increase in the budget of two point two million dollars roughly. And am I correct in pointing out that the vast majority of that is airport grant money? So this is not tax money coming from Ogden taxpayers. This isn't money that's being taken from the general fund to fund the airport. And and this two point two one eight million dollar increase, this is grant money that's come to us from the federal government for the purposes of enhancing our airport. And then we're just juggling money that has been sitting in one CIP fund to another to put it to good use.
Correct. Outside of the golf one, using a small amount.
Dollar one.
Yes. But yeah, there's no impact to any anything in the general fund, any property, any citizens. Yeah, this is all federal funds mainly and then reappropriating.
Little golf revenue. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Unrelated, but you're the guy to ask it to, I think, maybe. We had talked a few months ago about some of the emergencies that had come up and we had to go borrow a large piece of equipment from, I think, the county at that time. We we had a little discussion about whether that we should probably figure out how to purchase one for the city. And I think they were talking about an an excavator. I'm not sure if that's what it was.
So so we are working again, yeah, we're working with the Public Services Department along with the Fleet Group and Management Services to see what the need is. Or we're looking at what items are up for replacement and what items would be, they're trying to Justin Anderson is doing a really good job of trying to what what would right size what they need. And so, yeah, that is being looked at and I know there's been discussions on on some of those heavier equipment that what would be better used, better, could be better utilized for I believe you're speaking to when the the canyon, mouth of the canyon.
Well, yeah, I, they were talking about it for a lot of things, but that's when they, yeah, that was the last time they borrowed one, I think.
Yeah. So we are, we are looking into those things right now. And and as soon as we have a plan in place on what those would be and if it's going to require any financing, because I know that might be something we may need to do. That's something that we would come to council on. Yeah. So.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other budget questions?
Thanks for listening to me. And I believe this is on, will be on the ninth of December for consideration. Thank you.
Maybe we can find out about that Centennial CIP too. That'd be great. All right. Any other council business?
I think just a heads up. So the the WACOG meeting, there was discussion about the Weber transfer station and some possible adoptions to by the end of the year for a new plan. So I don't know how much has been shared at this point, but essentially the there's with competition going on in in the garbage space. The county is hoping to get all of the cities on board to, you know, basically allow us to continue to offer or allow the county to continue to offer that, offer the service of the of the of the transfer station. Yeah. And it it kind of takes all of us, I guess. And so we're, I think the the they ask for the county is to make sure that they're being as efficient as possible and 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 that sort of thing. But one of the things they're asking for is in the agreement, instead of a might get this wrong, but instead of a two-year agreement, we're going to a five. And then instead of a six-month out clause, they're asking for a two-year out clause. So adding eighteen months to that clause just to give them time to say, if you're going to be out, we need to be able to shut this down. And so that's that's sort of the what they're weighing. It's just saying if we, we don't get the cities involved in this, then it just doesn't make sense to continue to operate it. They don't continue to operate it and they shut that down. That eliminates a a place to drop garbage and could be a big challenge. You know, garbage is probably going to be dumped anywhere or anyways, right? So it's a, it's a, it's a big concern, but I think we'll hear more about it from administration at some point.
I can add a little of that too. I'm on the solid waste transfer.
Yeah.
Committee. Some of the, some of the numbers and and they're all kind of they're not accurate numbers. Let's put it that way. Well, some of them are. But right now are if if a citizen drops waste off at the transfer station, it's about fifty dollars a ton. That that is a real number. The the areas around us that that don't have that competition are in excess of a hundred dollars a ton for people to drop things off. And so the discussion amongst the other communities that that you know, feed into the into the transfer station is is we need to keep that going so that we have a a place to drop off our old paint and our old gasoline or what are what are those kind of hazardous things that there is nowhere to take? But the transfer station currently does take them and that's a service that they they don't make money on those. They will, they will treat green waste differently than they currently do. They won't recycle it and turn it into compost and resell it. It'll just go out in the waste stream. So so there's a lot of things that I think our citizens really care about that would necessitate us keeping that transfer station open. But it is going to require all of the communities. Ogden is about a third of the of the the tonnage that goes there. And in order to keep it running and keep those services available to the communities, we kind of need to get everybody. So that's, that's what's going on. Thanks for bringing that up.
And where's the competition, Rich?
It's the, it's well, it's the Ogden Transfer Station. It's the company that bought that. It's one of the ways.
Recycled earth?
Used to be recycled earth. Now it's, it's Ogden Waste Transfer is what they call it.
They're not tipping household.
They're trying to.
Because that raised all kinds of cane with
I know, well.
Business owners out there, including Wheelwright and right?
Yep.
With open trash.
They they have built a really nice building around their facility now. They're, they're, they're trying to be a good actor, but they're also trying to kill all the competition right now. So that's what's going on. But they currently don't offer and haven't said they would offer any, like you, you bring in your stuff in on a Saturday and you bringing in your your old paint and those things will be unavailable. And and that has a bad implication for the city because people that have that stuff, they'll just go dump it someplace.
Talked a lot today. Anything else? Yeah, I was just gonna say next week you'll be declaring the honorary mayor for Christmas Village. So normally you wear your sweatshirts. I'll try and remind, remind you Tuesday morning to put on your, or at least bring them so you can slip them on for that. So just wanted to let you know that. Anything else? All right. Guess we're done. There are sandwiches in there, so make sure you grab them.